Good evening. I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Cholo City Council to order. By rule of policy, that all council members are present. With the exception of our missing Vice Mayor Alsop tonight, council member Hatch this evening has been excused. We'd like to welcome those of you who are with us here tonight in the audience, as well as those who may be watching at home on City 56. Feel free to participate if you want to speak and call to the public, fill out a form that's back here in the room and give it to the city clerk, okay? I would like to begin this evening with invocation with ask council member Kelly if he'd lead us in prayer, followed by the pledge of allegiance by council member Leach. Would you, those who'd like to join with us, please stand.
Father in heaven, dear Lord, I do thank you for the very privilege of serving in this position. I thank you for this beautiful city you so miraculously spared many years ago. I'd ask now that you be with our service personnel, women abroad, be with their families as they're separated from them. Guide and direct this council as we conduct the business of the city. We might do it with great wisdom and for the good of the city. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, council member Kelly and council member Leach. First item we have tonight is call to the public. Any citizen desiring to speak on an item that's not on the agenda may do so at this time. Know that you need to address the council as a whole and you have three minutes in which to speak. So, our first invite here, we have Allison Efnor, if she'd like to come up.
Doesn't mean you have to take all three.
No, I made it short. Good evening, everyone. I'm here to invite you to an event. So, I want to start off by saying, what if there is a point system that if you had six or more points, you were 4,100 times more likely to be an IV drug user? Or if you had six points or more, you were 3,100, 3,100 or 5,000% more likely to commit What if I also told you that one out of 11 middle-class Americans have six points? This is called ACES. And if you haven't heard of it, it's adverse child experiences and it affects every race, every religion, every social status, you name it. It also affects our workforce, our prison systems, our cities, our towns, our fire departments and our police departments. It keeps us very busy reacting to what ACES is creating in the future of our community. Our kids turn into, that experience these tend to go on to harder times as an adult. So, what I'm here today is I want to invite you all, our police and our fire as well, to a discussion on May 20th. This is a discussion that's put together at Our Lady of the Snow from 7:30 to noon. I've provided you with the invite, looks like this, and I've also provided you with an ACE survey, just for your information. I'm not asking you to take it or share that information with anybody. But I would like to see our city join us at this discussion. It's not about just talking about how we're going to be proactive in addressing our suicide rates, our, and all the information we shared in our community health assessment. It's going to be, how do we do this proactive work? And it is a framework. We already have about 90 people that have RSVP'd, including state legislation, other town and city officials, other city councils. So, I hope that we would see you there. If you need any information, it's on this form. You can email me at any time and I would love to give you more information. So, I think I did three minutes. Yes, Rennie?
Our Lady of Snow Community Hall?
Yes.
What, what town?
That's in Snowflake. Thank you. Yeah, it's not, I don't think it's on, well, it might be on here, but they, might have, yeah, it's on here. So, yes. And we will provide a light breakfast and a lunch. It's done at noon. You can stay and network with the other leadership in the communities surrounding Navajo, in Navajo County and surrounding Navajo County. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you and thank you for what you do.
Thank you, Ally.
Anyone else at this time on the call to the public? See no one else moved. I'll close call to the public and come back to special events. Tonight, we have some great young men and young women with us here on the Kids Rock Program. I'm going to turn to our city clerk and have her kind of explain a little bit about what the Kids Rock Program is, okay?
Thank you, Mayor. So, every year, we have a program that we, the city does with our third graders. And during, throughout the school year, we have departments who, people from our departments go into the classrooms and talk to the students about what their department does. And so, it helps the kids understand a little bit about city government. And Kids Rock stands for Kids Reach Out for Community Knowledge. And so, at the end of the year, we always have a poster contest, which the kids, the theme is community pride. And the third graders do the poster and then we have our council members come in and judge the posters and pick the top three. So, that's what we're here tonight to do.
Great. Thank you. And we appreciate the council members and those who judged this. It's quite an experience to do, to look at all these neat, neat drawings that these young men and young women have done. So, it's just neat to see the pride that they have in our community. So, we have three positions that we've given this year, first, second and third. I want to note that the third place basket is provided by the Cholo City Clerk's office. The second place is provided by the basket provided by the Cholo Public Library. And first place is provided basket by the Cholo Aquatic Center. So, our third place person is Melanie Mada. And this is her. Now, Melanie, you got big hands? Okay. There you go. Congratulations. Here's your certificate.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Congratulations.
Good job.
Our second place is, and Melanie's from Mrs. Provost's class, so great there. Second place is from Mrs. Beckner's class, Nathan Webb.
Are we going to have everybody up here for pictures, I hope, so they can?
That was hers. This is yours. Community pride, this is his picture here. And Nathan, congratulations. Awesome.
Good job, Nathan.
And first place is from Ms. Schmutz's class, and that is Ben Merrill. Ben, you going to tell us a little bit about your picture? Stand right there. Stand right up there where the podium is. Pull that mic down and tell everybody what your picture's about, okay?
My picture is police officers, a duck place with duckweed, also a pet store, our city and also cars.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Congratulations. Congratulations.
He wants that.
Now, if we could just have all three of the contestants come up, stand right here a minute, Ben. Stand right here.
Come up here and get a picture.
Parents can come up and take pictures. Just turn around right here, okay? One, two, three. And I'll hold your certificates up and...
Anybody wants to come on up to the front? Come on.
Stop, stop, get off, off. Sorry, sweetheart.
Yeah, we are.
You're not, Rennie. That big old head of yours is still in there.
You know, I pattern mine after yours.
That's great. Let's give him one more big round of applause. Thanks for making our community great. We appreciate it.
Good job, Allison.
I know.
Did you hear that?
Here's some more on this. I do want to hit them.
The next item we have is a presentation regarding our wildlife mitigation by APS, Neil Traver.
Mayor.
Welcome, Neil.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Council members, thanks for letting me be here tonight. For those who don't know me, my name is Neil Traver. I'm Division Manager for Arizona Public Service up here in northeastern Arizona. And I'm here to talk tonight a little bit about some policies and procedures that APS has instilled recently within, related to fire mitigation and some things that we've got going on that we want to share with you. I presented on this last year when this first kicked off with APS and this year, coming back to the table to kind of share what we're doing and let you guys be aware of some of the preventative maintenance that we're doing on our systems and some of the things that we're doing so that we can reduce the potential for fire in the region. So, as we're all aware, it was a fantastic winter. It was, the White Mountains were truly white for quite a long time and unfortunately, it's all starting to melt off. And we know that with that, it dries out and we have tall grass and a lot of potential for fire in the region. We've gone through some very devastating fires, the rodeo Chedeska Fire, the Walla Fire, some others in this region that are very close to this community and our hearts. And we, we as a company have looked at that and said, we want to be able to prevent or have the opportunity to mitigate having a potential for any equipment that we have out on a system to have any fire. So, what we have out on the system in our distribution lines are what we call our feeders. All the lines that are going around town and out through the forest, we call those feeders. And on those feeders, we have line devices that we call reclosers. So, these reclosers, what they do is they're constantly looking down the line and as they're looking down the line, if something were to come and interrupt the power or cause a fault, for example, through the forest, a tree branch comes and falls and hits the lines and goes phase to phase or cuts the line, the power automatically turns off. And these reclosers are looking down the line and that recloser is set to try three times to re-energize the distribution system, put power back on. And this whole system is designed to keep people in power and avoid having outages. So, these systems, well, they'll look down the line and a branch comes and falls on the, on the line and it comes and sits on it and the power turns off and that recloser holds it for just a moment. It's called a momentary. And then it re-energizes that line and is re-energized that line, a lot of times that branch or something, whatever's distributing the power, will have already fallen off the line and gone to the ground. And so, you see a, just a quick blink of your lights and they come right back on. You may have seen it in your home, you may see it in your business place or whatever it is. And so, that's what those, that device is intended to do. So, sometimes we have Mylar balloons, your neighbor's trampoline gets picked up and blown across, the neighbor's shed gets picked up and thrown into the power lines. So, as it comes across and hits those lines, that device turns the power off just for a moment, lets the lines clear and then it re-energizes. So, like I said, that recloser will try that and make that attempt three times. And what we're doing is we're looking at that and saying, what we want to do is we're going to go into those line devices and turn all of those line devices off proactively before what we call high risk or high fire season potentials. So, we work closely with the Forest Service, we work closely with the fire chiefs and others that kind of tell us, okay, it's, it's time. We know we're closing the forest down, we're not allowing campfires out there anymore. That's kind of our clue and we work closely with them to say, we're going to go out and proactively turn these devices off. What does that mean? That means that when, during those times of high-risk fire, when a Mylar balloon or the neighbor's trampoline or a branch comes and hits those devices, instead of returning off for just a moment and then return, turning back on, they're going to stay off and the power's going to stay out until we can actually put somebody out there and walk that line down or drive the line down and confirm that the line's in good, it's intact, it's not frayed, we don't have anything sitting on the line that when it re-energizes, it's going to cause a spark. That's the whole intent. Sometimes a big branch will come down and cut the wire clean and the wire will drop to the ground. And we don't want any potential for that wire to come energized while that's on the ground and cause sparks. So, that's some of the things that we're, that we're doing. The whole point behind this is to, is for safety. Safety is our number one priority at APS and this is something we feel is very critical. Safety for the public, safety for the employees, safety for the first responders that are actually being called out to the forest, called out to homes that are, that are in peril, things that are going on. And so, ultimately, what does this mean for you? Is it means that instead of having a momentary on the line during those, those few months of high-risk fire season, it's likely that we'll have extended outages or what we call extended outages, meaning instead of being just a few moments where your power's out, you might be out of power for an hour, two hours, maybe even longer. But overall, this is a really good, this is a really good thing. I've presented in many other communities and it's a, it's gone over really well. A lot of people are very much so looking at this like, we can live without power for a few hours. We don't want to live without our forests. We don't want to live without, you know, a city getting burned or homes getting burned, people getting lost in fires. And that's really what we're trying to do, is we're trying to mitigate that and reduce the potential for having a fire caused by our equipment. The other piece of that is if there is a big fire going already somewhere, not caused by us or for whatever reason, out in the forest, and it's coming through into our distribution lines or our transmission lines, we'll proactively turn those power lines off as well to allow the first responders to go in there and work without having the potential to have energized lines anywhere around them, potentially above them, coming down or on the ground. So, that's what I'm doing here tonight. I'm trying to share this with the communities, let people know. Anyone, so, the whole city of Cholo is considered a high-fire risk area. So, all the feeders in this region will be impacted by that, the entire town of Cholo will be impacted by that. Everybody will be getting a flyer sent in the mail to them that kind of explains what I said. So, everybody who's a customer of APS in this region will get that flyer that kind of explains what's going on and why we're doing it at a higher level than what I've talked to tonight. But overall, this, this will probably take place right at the beginning of May. It'll depend, like I said, we're working with the Forest Service to find out exactly when we should go ahead and proactively turn these devices off. But it'll probably be likely right around the beginning of the May. So, just want to share that with you and if you have any questions for me, I'll let you guys ask those now.
Comments, questions? No, we just appreciate you being proactive. That's great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Next item is item 6C. That has been polled tonight. So, our next item will be the consent calendar. Are there any items on the consent calendar that needs to be polled or reviewed individually? I'll read those items. We have a consideration of resolution R 201909, renewing intergovernmental agreement with the Arizona Game and Fish, consideration of approval, Second Amendment to Cholo Bluff Development Agreement, consideration of the approval of property use agreement with the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, and consideration of the minutes of the Cholo City Council meeting, the study session of April 2nd, the regular meeting of April 2nd, the study session of April 4th, special meeting of April 5th, the special meeting of April 9th. Look for a motion.
I'll move.
You have a motion by council member Leach, second by councilwoman Kavas. Any other discussion? All those in favor? See that that passed five to zero. Thank you.
Mayor, let me, for those of you that have class tomorrow on everything, you don't need to stay for the whole meeting unless you want to, you could leave.
But we'd appreciate, no, I'm joking.
Thank you. You're welcome to stay, but you know, you don't have to. Next item is new business, consideration of appointment of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee members. Look to the city clerk, Tamara Reedhead.
Thank you, Mayor. The terms of two Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee members, Doug Ward and Sally Williams, expired at the end of March. Staff contacted the incumbents to gauge their interest in reapplying. Ms. Williams applied to be reappointed and Mr. Ward chose not to reapply. Per policy, city staff advertised the two vacancies. We received applications from four individuals, Christina Lewis, Kimberly Martinez, LaMista Schultz and Sally Williams. The four applicants were interviewed by the city council on April 9th. Before you tonight is a questionnaire if you will mark choices for the two individuals you wish to appoint and then we'll tally the result.
Which way do you want them? Down here?
We don't trust Rachel yet.
Two people.
Went to Cholo, so once we get past a certain number, once you get past a certain number, shoes coming off.
All right, you got to count to what, three?
Only two in most cases, but three at least in one case.
Yeah.
Not sure I put my name on it. There's a blank one in there, could be me. It's going to be a report from the anger. There's Jimmy.
He passed them back to us maybe and...
You wanted us to...
I mean, just circle or whatever. I don't know unless you got another.
This one's fine. Forget who I voted. It's been so long.
Just pass them down.
Quit looking at it.
Why is he looking at our votes?
So, we vote between...
Between Kimberly Martinez, LaMista Schultz and Sally Williams.
He's got to look at his notes. You guys didn't go to Cholo High School too, did you? Yep. You want her to do that? You circle the one who's... Way to go, Connie.
He just marked over it. It just marked over it.
Oh, it didn't change.
The pen didn't work, is that it?
Another tie?
Yes.
Put them on there as an alternate.
Add a person to the board.
No, put them on as an alternate.
Okay, we have another tie. So, this time, it's between LaMista Schultz and Sally Williams.
Between who and who?
LaMista Schultz and Sally Williams.
They give us our sheet so we can remember that. Mark them differently. Where?
Just write three.
I'm going to write a square with a check in the middle of it.
I'll write third.
Wow, this is going to be...
Five, so this should be...
It's going to be the longest meeting of the year.
Here it's going to be the...
Already used.
The longest agenda item of the year, right here.
She's not.
We need one more council person here. No, we're odd, aren't we?
Okay, so, the two appointees will be Sally Williams and Christina Lewis.
Congratulations.
I move to appoint Sally Williams and Christina Lewis to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee as committee members.
You have a motion and second by council member Kelly. Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Pass five to zero. Next item is a consideration of the appointment of the Aviation Advisory Committee members. Tamara Reedhead.
The terms of two members of the five-member Aviation Advisory Committee expired at the end of March. Lou Booker reapplied to be reappointed to the committee and Mr. Ashleman, Steve Ashleman, chose not to be considered for reappointment. Per policy, staff advertised the vacancy and received four applications, two from residents and two from non-residents. The council interviewed these applicants on April 9th. The city adopted resolution number R 201704 in February 2017 and this resolution outlines the requirements for the Aviation Advisory Committee. It stipulates that all committee members must reside in Navajo County with a majority living in Cholo, within Cholo city limits. In addition, the council's preference, though not a requirement, is that at least two pilots serve on the committee. Of the incumbent committee members, Tom Cedarblade is a resident and a pilot, Jerry Howell is a resident and a non-pilot, and Doug Riggins is a non-resident and a pilot. So, to maintain the committee's residency requirement, the council should appoint at least one resident among the four applicants. You mark your, you already marked your questionnaires, we'll tally the votes.
Phil Cup is not here.
Okay, so, the two with the most votes are Lou Booker and William Gary Winslow.
Need a motion on that?
We'll move.
You have a motion by council member Crittenden, second by council member Leach. All those in favor?
Right.
Any opposed? See that pass five to zero. Thank you. Next item is item 8C, consideration of appointment of the Board of Adjustment Members. Tamara Reedhead.
Thank you, Mayor. The terms of three Board of Adjustment members expired in March. All seats are four-year terms and per policy, staff advertised the vacancies and proceeded to contact the three incumbents to gauge their interest in reapplying. One incumbent, Steve Hare, chose not to reapply and the other, James Zimmerman, submitted his application. William Johnson, who just completed three, four-year terms on the Planning and Zoning Commission, also submitted an application. On March 5th, the council interviewed seven applicants for the Planning and Zoning Commission and of those seven, four were appointed at the March 19th council meeting. Staff contacted the remaining three Planning and Zoning applicants to see if they were interested in serving on the Board of Adjustment. Michael Gibson and Chad Lawrence agreed to be considered. So, if you mark your ballots, we'll tally the votes.
Great. I got rid of my notes.
We needed a vote again. We have a tie. Okay, so the two, um, with the most votes are Lou Booker and William Gary Winslow.
We have a motion on that.
We'll move.
We have a motion by Councilmember Crittenden, second by Councilmember Leach. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? See, that passed five to zero. Thank you. Next item is item 8C, consideration of appointment of the Board of Adjustment members. Emma Reedhead.
Thank you, Mayor. The terms of three Board of Adjustment members expired in March. All seats are four-year terms, and per policy, staff advertised the vacancies and proceeded to contact the three incumbents to gauge their interest in reapplying. One incumbent, Steve Hare, chose not to reapply, and the other, James Zimmerman, submitted his application. William Johnson, who just completed three four-year terms on the Planning and Zoning Commission, also submitted an application. On March 5, the council interviewed seven applicants for the Planning and Zoning Commission, and of those seven, four were appointed at the March 19 council meeting. Staff contacted the remaining three Planning and Zoning applicants to see if they were interested in serving on the Board of Adjustment. Michael Gibson and Chad Lawrence agreed to be considered. So if you mark your ballots, we'll tally the votes.
Great. I got rid of my notes.
We have a tie on between James Zimmerman and Chad Lawrence. And the one that was appointed was Bill Johnson and Michael Gibson.
Are there any spoiled ballots?
The ones we wrote on twice is all.
I got mine in late.
Okay, so the three that will be appointed are William Johnson, James Zimmerman, and Michael Gibson.
Look for a motion.
I'll move.
The motion by Councilmember Leach is her second. Second. Second by Councilwoman Kukavas. All in favor? Any opposed? See, that passed five to zero. Thank you. We appreciate all those who have applied for these different committees and were willing to serve. We had a lot of really good candidates, and so it was a great opportunity to see citizens come out and be willing to serve. Next item is item 8D, consideration of the award of a construction contract for the 2019 rehabilitation and rejuvenation of the public roadways slurry seal contract. Mr. Hemisaw.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The 2019 capital improvements program included funding for the rehabilitation rejuvenation, or R and R we call it, city roadways utilizing slurry seal. The city's current pavement preservation plan includes a minimum maintenance of crack filling, patching, and reservicing every city's street parking lot every six years. City crews are crack filling and patching repairs in the areas identified for slurry seal this year. You've probably seen them on the ballot getting started, things are finally drying out. Rehabilitation includes personal labor, equipment, materials required to place approximately 290,000 square yards of type-two polymer-modified asphalt slurry seal on selected city streets and applying pavement markings after the slurry seal placement if they've been covered up. The engineer's construction cost assessment for the work was $429,000. The invitation to bid was published as required, and sealed bids were opened publicly with the following results. Southwest Slurry Seal with a total bid of $404,473.50. American Payment Preservation at $432,245. And VSS International at $509,000. Staff recommends awarding the 2019 R and R Slurry Seal Construction Contract, City of Sholo Project Number R 1919, to Southwest Slurry Seal in an amount not to exceed the Their bid tabulation is attached, as well as the slurry map showing the locations of the work this year, and I am available for any questions. See if I can get this.
Thank you. Any questions?
Yeah, is Ellsworth part of the city of Sholo now?
That roadway is, is city maintained, yes.
Most, most of it.
Most of it's sliver, yeah.
Shane, it might be a good idea to go through the slides just to show where the roads are gonna be.
Okay, take me back to the beginning?
Yeah.
Thank you, Rachel. This mouth is, her mouse has got me fooled. There we go. So that's the overall map, just a start, and this year we're gonna be blue. That's the section that we've just did a sidewalk job downtown on the McNeil portion near the school going up Eighth, Eighth Street. That's the next section, Adams Park up in Sholo Bluff. This is gonna be Cedar Ridge area off the South by Mount Road. And that is the portion of Ellsworth Road that we just spoke about. Evergreen Estates. Willis, this is off North Central, just north of Olin Road, and there's a North Second and Third as well. Wolford, over by Hampton Inn going towards the creek. This is Sixteenth Ave. Just the first portion that's in good, good condition and received crack fill and gets This is, shows the, one of the new roadways we built this year by the Oaks Lodge, Eighth Street, that does continue all the way to Wolford now, pieces of Whipple, Stratton Reedhead, Eighth and Eleventh, as well as Pine Bluff. Another road that was just rebuilt this year was East Thornton, and over there with, over the commercial loops, Lumberman Loop, Adams, and Commerce Drive. And then this section here is gonna be the area that's getting slurry sealed and receiving the pavement mark and replacement. That is on Scott Ranch Road, Sholo Lake Road, Cub Lake Road, those all require paint to be put back. And there's also, the other areas, the neighborhood are up of 28th and 30th, Pine Glen. These up top, Cedar Creek, Sierra Creek, I'm sorry. And sections of Sierra Pines will be touched this year as well. There's a Eighth, we're gonna go ahead and do Eighth Avenue, which is near the Sierra Vista, where we just did the sewer project. If you might recall, those roadways are scheduled for rebuild in the CIP for next year, and then Westwood will be done as well. That roadway was also rebuilt this year. You kind of notice the trend, we, we kind of wait and wait until we get these roads fixed, and we put a surface on them right after we get them rebuilt. Get them in the schedule that way.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Yeah.
Councilmember Leach.
When are they gonna start, and how long is it gonna take them?
Typically, our slurry seal lasts about three weeks, three, sometimes four weeks. We try to schedule them to start the first parts of June. We do that on purpose to get away from the school traffic, the memorial traffic, the Sholo Days things, get them, you know, first, second week in June, get it done before the rains hit, and the Fourth of July season. I did hear from the contractor that they're busy, things were really wet down the valley, which is kind of pushing schedules, but we're still scheduling the preconstruction meeting, I believe, the 15th of May, and then we'll kick things off after that. So tentatively, first parts of June.
And what if they want to move it till like after July? Is that a problem? If they're getting backed up down there, they're gonna back us up?
They can, if they want to delay, let's say, schedule-wise, we'll, we'll work with them, but in the bid docs, there's no additional cost for any weather delays. So if they only get to slurry for two hours and they have to shut down because the rains are coming, that's all they get for the day. And then their crews are staying up there doing nothing but sitting around.
Maybe if they don't do it when we want them to, we can get a little price reduction.
So they're, they'll probably aim for June, and, and when I spoke to them, that's, they're doing, looking at this schedule, see what they.
Thank you. That's the window that will be most profitable for them.
It is, it is.
And so they're highly motivated to make that schedule.
It is, and something that's, you'll see in the slurry seal communities is they try to do the warmer areas like Yuma, down the valley, Las Vegas during the winter, fall seasons, when it's easier for them to do the work. When it gets really, really hot down there, it takes so long for that slurry to cure, they like to be up in our neck of the woods. So we try to bid this in that timeframe as well.
I need a motion. I'll make one. I move to award the construction contract for the 2019 rehabilitation and rejuvenation of public roadway slurry seal, City of Sholo Project R 1919, to Southwest Slurry Seal in an amount not to exceed $404,473.50.
Second.
Your motion, there's a second by Councilwoman Kukavas. All those in favor? Any opposed? See, that passed five to zero. Thank you, Shane. Next item is item 8E, consideration award of a contract for commercial dumpster roll-off services in the city of Sholo. Mr. Cupp.
I'm back for more. I get to stand in for Mr. Cupp.
You look good, Mr. Cupp.
All right. City has had a commercial dumpster roll-off services for duration of five years by Larson Waste Incorporated. Contract has reached its final year of renewal. In March 2019, city staff advertised for bids for commercial dumpster roll-off services at various city facilities. Contract term will be for three years, with an option of an additional two one-year renewal periods, similar to the previous contract. That'll be for a total potential five years. On April 10, 2019, bid packages were publicly opened at City Hall. Two responsive bid packages were received as shown on the attached bid tab. The city currently has one two-yard dumpster, two four-yard dumpsters, nine six-yard dumpsters, and one 15-yard dumpster, and two 30-yard dumpsters. The bid proposal will give staff the flexibility to determine the service frequency and size of the container each location. Staff recommends awarding the contract for commercial dumpster roll-off selection services to Larson Waste Incorporated, effective in July 1, 2019. And the bid tabulation is attached, and what you'll see is, we, we basically, we reached out, asked for pricing for the two-yard, the four-yard, the six-yard, the 15 and 30-yard, based on weekly, bi-weekly, and monthly pricing. As you can see, the parent law in almost all those categories is Larson Waste. I'm available for any questions.
No questions, I'll look for a motion.
I did have a question, but I'm.
Okay, go ahead.
And then ask the question. Move to award the commercial dumpster roll-off contract, Larson Waste, Inc., for an initial term of three years, beginning July 1 of 2019, with two additional one-year options. And authorize mayor to sign the contract.
We have a motion, and I'll let you take your question now.
Did we get a second?
Second.
You have a second.
The question is, on these totals at the bottom, that's for what period of time?
As for, to just to get the pricing comparison, we just assumed weekly pickup for everything, for every size dumpster, just to start, which would be the most frequent pickup we would have, would be a weekly pickup, and almost all the pricing on that you'll see was favorable to Larson, and has him as a little better.
So the, the very bottom number there, the 1355, is weekly?
As, yeah, that is a, a single pickup for, you'll see that there's one two-yard dumpster, two four-yard dumpsters, the nine six-yards, one 15 and two 30, and that's the weekly pickup option for each one of those.
Is that just an average type thing? Is that what you're saying?
I just, I just went with the most frequent potential pickup would be weekly, instead of bi-weekly or monthly. I just assumed it would be every, every week, let's start there, and if we want to reduce service, we can do that. The contract allows us to reduce service or change the size of the dumpster needed for the, for the.
Well, again, whatever.
Councilmember Leach.
I know, maybe you do, where are all those? Are they all at Public Works?
I don't know, there's, there's a couple full of works, there's just the city facilities, say, library, city hall, Aquatic Center, Police Department, things like that. There is the, one of the 30 yards I know for sure is at the Public Works yard, and the other 30 yard, the big one, is at the parks, the Sholo Park, gather, kind of consolidate all the trash in that area.
But we also have trash service at those facilities too, the police department, the pool, right?
That's what, that's what these are talking about, the large dumpsters, that everything ends up in.
But don't they have the little small ones from Waste Management as well, or no?
No.
That's, that contracts residential only. Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion? We have a motion, we have a second, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? See, that passed five to zero. Thank you, Mr. Hemisaw. Our next item is item 8F, consideration of resolution R 2019 07, authorizing submitting application for community development block grant funds and resolution R 2019-08, committing local funds as leverage for sidewalk improvement project on Hall Street from 11th Street to White Mountain Road. Ms. Lisa Robertson.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. This year, Navajo County is the entitlement recipient for approximately $400,000 in community development block grant money for fiscal year 2019. As, as the sole applicant, Navajo County may, excuse me, may submit three eligible CDBG projects for funding that assist persons of low to moderate income to prevent or eliminate slums and blight, or solve an urgent need or health hazard in fiscal year 2019. On November 27, 2018, Navajo County held a public hearing to gather citizen input on projects to fund with CDBG funds in fiscal year 2019. Six community projects throughout Navajo County were presented to the Board of Supervisors for its consideration, including a sidewalk improvement project in Sholo on Hall Street from 11th Street to White Mountain Road. Sholo is seeking $175,000 in CDBG funding for the project. On January 22, 2019, the Navajo County Board of Supervisors adopted resolution 0219, authorizing submission of an application for fiscal year 2019 CDBG funding for the Sholo Sidewalk Improvement Project and two other community projects. The Northern Arizona Council of Governments submitted the county resolution and letter of intent to the Arizona Department of Housing, authorizing the select projects to receive CDBG regional account funding in fiscal year 2019. NACOG will facilitate the three applications, which require the individual project applicants to submit two resolutions, one authorizing the submission of a CDBG application, and two, leverage of CD funds, city funds to complete the project. The Department of Housing expects to release the CDBG funds in approximately 2019. Any questions?
No good job on getting this submitted and stuff, where we have a chance of getting funds.
It'll be good to complete that project, for sure.
Yeah, look for a motion first for resolution R 2019 07.
Which one? There's two of them.
Top one, we're gonna do one at a time.
Who's asking for individual motions?
Okay, I move to adopt resolution number R 2019-07, authorizing submitting an application for fiscal year 2019, community development block grant, county regional account to finance construction of a sidewalk improvement project on Hall Street from 11th Street to White Mountain Road located within the Sholo Redevelopment District.
Thank you. We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Kelly. Any other discussion? Call for the vote, all in favor? Any opposed? See, that passed five to zero. Look for a motion now for resolution R 2019 08. Councilmember Crittenden, thank you.
I move to adopt resolution number R 2019-08, committing local funds of $25,000 in city engineering and construction management services as leverage for fiscal year 2019 community development block grant, county regional account to finance construction of a sidewalk improvement project on Hall Street from 11th Street to White Mountain Road.
A motion, is there a second? Second by Councilwoman Kukavas. Any other discussion? Call for the vote, all in favor? Any opposed? See, that passed five to zero. Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you, Council.
Next item is item 8G, consideration of resolution R 2019-10, adopting use agreement policy and fees for city recreational facilities and athletic fields. You guys have a special handout that's amended what's on the handout previously. Mr. Rimha.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Previously, the city council had adopted use agreement and fees for using city hall and library meeting rooms. With the number, with a number of requests from outside organizations and individuals wishing to use city recreational facilities and athletic fields, staff has deemed it's necessary to develop, to develop a use agreement that includes policies and procedures for using recreational facilities and fees, and that's shown in Exhibit A, Resolution 2019-10. Staff is also proposing cleaning deposit and rental fees for the use of buildings, although organizations sponsored by, partnering with, or financially supported by the city will be exempt from paying rental fees. Section 3-4-1 of the Sholo City Code authorizes council to adopt fees for administrative services. And just to point out real quick, Mayor mentioned on that, on the resolution, neglected on the buildings section on the first page, the $50 cleaning fee is. neglected on the building section on the first page, uh, the fifty-dollar cleaning fee is for events without food and we're requesting that council pass a, uh, a hundred fifty-dollar cleaning deposit if there is food in the event that applies, uh, to use the, uh, building. And with that, we can discuss if you have any questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Kelly.
Uh, these deposits are refundable if the place is left really well.
Correct.
Councilmember Leach.
So are these new? All brand new fees?
Not, not, not all of them. Um, there are some of them that have been, uh, utilized in policies that we've had and we just, in an effort to kind of make sure that we've got everything in one place. Um, we're just going through and kind of revamping and making sure everything's tight. And everything has been presented to the council so that it can be approved. So they're, not all of them are new. No.
Do you know off the top of your head what they are currently?
Um, I don't think we're changing any fees aside from the deposits. Um, we're not asking more for fields. We're not asking more for buildings. We get people, uh, who think that fees are fair. We get people who think the fees are unfair. Probably, probably pretty evenly split, so we kind of know that's right where we need to be. Actually, most people think it's a, we, we do a really good job at, uh, the rates that we charge, so. Um, yeah, pretty much, we, we just want to make sure that we're, if, if, if there's an event that's going to have food and cake and stuff that, if they do have a, an accident or if there is something that happens and they are negligent with regards to keeping the buildings clean, that we can, um, have that deposit. And also, I don't know if we wanted to move into this. I think one of the things that we're asking for, for fields, security cancellation, cleaning deposit, again, uh, the, and the youth group deposit, um, those, those are also new, those fees. And again, those are fully refundable if the fields are left in good condition. Of course, they're going to be used, um, but not, we're, we're just making sure that, uh, the lights get turned off and, uh, they're responsible and we hold that fee just in case, you know, the, the lights are left on, we can talk to them about that and recoup some of the costs that we incur.
Any other discussion? Questions at all? Look for a motion. Councilmember Leach.
I move to adopt resolution number R twenty nineteen dash ten, adopting a use agreement policy and fee for city recreational facility and athletic field.
Thank you. You have a motion. Is there a second? Standing by Councilmember Kelly. Any other discussion? Call for the vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? See that pass five to zero. Thank you. Next item we have is a summary of current events. I look to council member for any current events they'd like to share. Councilmember Leach.
Just real quick, we have the sixty-sixth anniversary and the barbecue, the seventh annual barbecue throwdown coming up the first weekend in May. And that is on Saturday, the fifth, and then also on May fourth is the, May fourth, sorry, is the throwdown. And then May third is also a SCA, State Cook Off Association Professional State Cook Off. If you want to bring a grill down to the park on Friday, I believe it's four thirty, four o'clock somewhere in there. Come on down, bring your grill, $100, and they'll provide you two steaks. Thank you.
That's great. Any other council members? Or anything? You know, tonight we had APS here earlier and it was really neat, uh, city manager and finance director and economic guys. We had an opportunity of meeting with APS and, and Flagstaff a while back and they gave a very informative meeting on our electric power and things that are going on. And it was just really a great meeting that we was able to attend. If you compare prices increases that APS has had over the past, I think, twenty years, it is just a small fraction compared to an apple or an orange or anything else, household good. Uh, what your electric costs have done. They've done a great job trying to keep our, our power affordable for us, so that's off to them. Also want to say happy Easter, uh, for all you people this weekend. It's a fantastic, uh, weekend to think about more serious things in life. And so, uh, we're all grateful for the opportunity of what, what Easter means. And so we just asked you to reach out to your families and show care and love to one another. It's a great opportunity for what we've all been blessed with. And I just wanted to put a plug in for the twenty-seventh of, uh, April here at nine o'clock at the high school. Come out and support your community in a community service project where we'll do a community day of service, uh, from nine to noon. And afterwards, we'll have a great, uh, hamburgers and hot dogs and rub shoulders with each other. So bring your shovels, bring your rakes, and bring somebody else to do the work if you need to and, and bring a wheelbarrow. So be great. City manager.
Thank you, mayor. The city's received notification that the city's been awarded the distinguished budget presentation award for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen by the Governor, Government Finance Officers Association. We want to congratulate our administrative services department, particularly Justin Johnson, Carrie Belby, for their commitment to, um, the, meeting the highest principles of government financing and budgeting. To receive the award, the city had to receive, had to satisfy nationally recognized guidelines for effective budget presentation. We want to congratulate again, um, our administrative services staff. And if you see Carrie Belby in the future, congratulate her. She put most of the work into preparing the document. The Sholo Police Department's annual tip with a cop, tip a cop will be held at La Conos next week on Wednesday, April twenty-fourth, from five thirty to eight thirty, with the police personnel waiting on the patrons. Um, thanks to the generous generosity of La Conos, all the tips, a hundred percent of the tips will go to support our Special Olympics. And also on April twenty-seventh, the mayor mentioned the MLK Day of Service. Again, that's at nine AM at the high school. Um, but also that evening, April twenty-seventh, the Darren Reed Memorial Scholarship fundraiser dinner and auction will at the Elks Lodge. Doors will open at four thirty, um, with dinner served at five o'clock. The silent, there'll be silent auction ending at five thirty, five forty-five, and live auction will begin at six o'clock. Tickets are available at the door. And finally, in public works projects, work continues on the twenty-fourth Drive Sewer Main replacement, the East Thornton roadway extension from Central Avenue to Sixth Street, East McNeil Waterline from Fifth Place to the Deuce of Clubs, and the Sewer Main extension on the west side of White Mountain Road from Fawnbrook Drive to Parkway Pine, Park Pine Way Plaza. Appreciate again our citizens' patience as we make improvements around the city. We have quite a few projects going on and more to come as the summer comes on. So thank you again.
Thank you. Any other comments or Councilmember Leach?
Can we get ADOT to do some maintenance on their roads as well this summer, maybe?
They have it in their five-year plan. That's what we'll say.
Hard to get in alignments now. Just drive down the dews.
At this time, uh, we need to move into executive session, uh, where we'll discuss, uh, legal advice here for portions of the North Meadow LLC and also discussion, consideration of the records exempt by law from public inspection of the executive minutes on March nineteenth and April ninth.
He's not done with you.
Before you make that motion on scheduling meetings, can we just mention a couple of meetings coming up?
We're not going to have any more meetings this year.
Yes, we are. Got some important ones.
This Thursday, April eighteenth at six PM, in the, these council chambers will have a budget review session, another budget review session. Just a reminder to the council, we should be able to finish, um, the study sessions for the budget at that meeting. Also, um, we've scheduled a open meeting law conflict of interest, public records training for newly appointed commission members, committee and board members on Tuesday, April twenty-third at six PM here at the council chambers. Um, current committee members, board members, and council members are also invited to attend since it's been a few years since most have received the training. We will make personal contact to those that the council appointed tonight and invite them to that meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry about that.
It's held where and when? The twenty-third.
Twenty-third at six PM.
At what time?
Six PM, next Tuesday.
Yeah, I need a motion to move into executive session.
So I move.
We have a motion. Is there a second by Councilmember Kelly? All those in favor? Any opposed? See that pass five to zero. This time I'll move into executive session. Thank you for being here. Those are interested tonight.
Going to another meeting, push or not going to say?